Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 28th. And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Kimberly Werfs, Miss for America Strong, Miss Bountiful. Thank you.
Will everyone please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Just so council members are aware, Kimberly Werfs is representing Bountiful as Miss for America Strong, Miss Bountiful, and she said that she would like to offer her services. So if there's anyone that you know that needs help, she is interested in helping and assisting in our community. So I have her contact information if anybody needs it. Thank you so much. And we're grateful to Pastor Benjer McVeigh, who's here representing the Flourishing Grace Church. Thanks for being here tonight to offer our invocation.
Thank you, it's an honor. Would you bow your heads with prayer with me? Father God, you tell us in your word that every good gift comes from above, coming down from the Father of lights, with whom there is no change or variation. Father, we are grateful for your goodness, we are grateful for every good gift, and the good gift of even these proceedings, Father. Would we, tonight, carefully consider what we have to consider? And God, would we do it in gratefulness that we live in such a place where we can have elected officials and where we can govern ourselves? Father, you also say in your word that if we need wisdom, we need only ask. And so, Father, we pray for wisdom, we pray that all that would be done today would be consideration of those who live in Bountiful, for those who are in need, and for those who are without power. And, Father, I pray that all would be done in wisdom and in love. Father, thank you for each of these people in front of me, thank you for their service. And, Father, I pray that you would continue to bless Bountiful. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. And Pastor Benjer, how long have you been at the Flourishing Grace Church?
Eight years.
Eight years. Thanks for your service. That's wonderful. Thank you for that beautiful prayer. So now we move to our public comment period. We'd love to hear from any of you, anyone who would like to speak. You have two minutes, just state your name and your address, and then please, two minutes is yours, so we'd love to hear from anyone.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West, Bountiful, yeah. Maybe I missed something, but earlier conversations, it seems like there's plans to change the land use code for the entire city to benefit a single entity. And, like, maybe I missed something, but I'm not sure. Asking to put into the code that the exit has to be on Bountiful Boulevard kind of limits, and the size that's been suggested. So I'm just, like I said, maybe I missed something. But I'm under the impression you want to change the city, the land use code for the entire city for just one small parcel. Thank you for the wonderful job you folks are doing.
Thank you.
Matt Jenkins, 495 East, 1350 North, longtime resident, first-time commenter. I would like to share my testimony of the winter parking restrictions and the undue burden it puts on my fellow citizens. With housing prices as they are, it has created a situation where families are living together longer than in the past, and these adult children generally have vehicles of their own with few parking options. The options seem to be the front lawn or the street. I feel that parking on the street is the better option. And considering that the snow typically melts within a few days, whereas the damage to the front lawn may be permanent, the definitely parking on the street is the better option. Is there a possibility of nullifying this current restriction or adjusting it because, oh, yeah, or adjusting it? And the good side is I've noticed that law enforcement seems to be reasonably relaxed on enforcement of this restriction. And, yeah, so. But on the way over here, I also thought, with my extra 40 seconds, what if, and maybe you guys have spoken about this before, because this is one of the few meetings that I've been to, but if we had certain streets designated as no parking zones, but residential streets were, you know, open to parking all year round. Anyway, those are just my ideas. Thank you for your time and your service, you all do a great job. Yeah, I'll sit down, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lain Pappenfuss, I live at 719 West, 3100 South. And my comments tonight are directed at the general plan discussion of housing and city development. I find it all very fascinating. I applaud the council for taking the plan seriously and attempting to find solutions for our housing, transportation, and community-building crises. I've heard some pretty good discussions and ideas over the past year-plus, but I also worry that there is an attempt to somehow encase the city or portions of the city in amber, to not let it, to grow, or neighborhoods to grow or breathe, that by somehow locking the door after we got inside, that we're protecting ourselves. Unfortunately, I don't think that will work, it'll do the exact opposite. So, I suggest, my suggestion is to keep several maxims in mind as we continue to refine the general plan. I would, I would prefer, personally, if we relied on small incremental investments or little bets instead of large, expensive, transformative ones, that we emphasize the resiliency of the result over the efficiency of execution, that any changes are adaptable to feedback, that we prioritize bottom-up action from the citizens and not top-down control, to seek, to conduct as much of life as possible at a personal, face-to-face level, that we're obsessive about accounting for all revenues, expenses, assets, and long-term liabilities. We have to do the math. And lastly, no single neighborhood should bear the burden of massive change, and just as important, no neighborhood should be exempt from that change. Change is going to happen whether we think we're allowing it or not, so let's create the conditions for individual success. Some of my favorites, shrinking minimum lot sizes and setbacks, providing some pre-approved housing plans, and ending subsidized or mandatory parking. We also need to make it safe for kids to get around independently, and embrace the pioneering spirit that built Bountiful, a spirit that welcomed growth and allowed new residents to put down roots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak. My fourth grader wants me to speak on his behalf. Brooke Freeburn, 400 East, in Bountiful. I'm just here to thank you for the diligence in the study of the Traffic Safety Committee and for their consideration of kind of the extenuating circumstances at Bountiful Elementary with the complicated crosswalk situation. I think this is a hard day to be talking about crosswalks, but I think it's an important time for us to pay attention to what we value in this community. I was at a Traffic Safety Committee meeting when one of the student council members, a fifth grader, turned to me and said, "Oh, a crossing guard would maybe be about $5,000. Our pennies-for-people project saved $7,000, earned $7,000 this week, maybe we could give it to the city instead of the food bank." And I think that is, at the heart of what Bountiful citizens are and do. I think we need to follow the example of our young people in caring for each other. And I think sadly she didn't know that they had actually only earned $700, and they did end up giving the money to the food bank. But I do think that we prioritize safety in this community, and we prioritize our children, and that I think we can find the funds to back that up, and I'm grateful to know that that's the recommendation, and hope that you continue to vote that way tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks very much for being here and for your comments. We will now consider approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And now we will move to council reports. We'll begin with Councilman Murray tonight.
Nothing to report on tonight.
Councilwoman Price Hewish.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the Power Commission earlier today, and it is an assignment that I really relish. It is a wonderful group of people and professionals in the Power Department. Today, we had the opportunity to elect a new chair of the Power Commission, and I'm happy to say it's a woman who is highly experienced in finance and, and has been a long-serving member of the Power Commission, Susan Becker. And that was a unanimous vote to elect her as the chair and vice-chair, Dan Bell. So it's always nice to see a really nice transition, and they're wonderful people serving there. I also would like to just recognize someone who's sitting in our audience tonight, Beverly Ward. She is a member of our Planning Commission, and she is just always so incredibly willing to step forward and give service in our community. I just think she is an amazing, wow, I think she's an amazing human being. And I've seen this in so many ways, but this week had a really great opportunity to accompany the Bountiful City Youth Council to the State Capitol, where they had a half-day at the state legislature. Beverly, who spends a lot of hours at the Capitol and is well-versed in all things, Utah Legislature gave a tour, and the kids were able to attend a Transportation Appropriation Committee meeting. Beverly walked them around the Capitol, educated them on the process of how bills come into being, and kind of the whole sausage-making process there. And they were fascinated and had a ton of questions, and it was just so cool to see them light up with curiosity and questions, and then we got to go in and observe floor time in the house. And I want to also, so thank you, Beverly, and I also want to recognize that Senator Todd Wyler was there and met with our kids, Representative Ray Ward, Representative Melissa Ballard, and they all took time out of their busy, incredibly busy schedules to come and meet personally with our kids, share their experiences, and inform and engage with our wonderful BCYC. So, thank you, and it was just a really, really cool day. And also, Councilmember Bradshaw was there, and that, I want to also recognize her for taking time out of her busy day, because she is very actively engaged in many things up in the Capitol, and took time to come and give an alternative perspective also about how the legislature works and different ways people engage. So thank you, Councilmember Bradshaw, for being there.
Thank you for that report. It's wonderful that the Youth Council could be there, and thank you so much, Beverly, and Councilwoman Bradshaw, and Councilwoman Price Hewish. Just as a report, I'm serving on a committee with the Wasatch Front Regional Council, TransCom, and also just wanted to ask the council members, we've been invited to Bountiful Community Service Council meeting, February 8th, but in order to avoid being a quorum, I just, I plan to attend, but I just want to make sure that not more than two council members plan to be there. So, just confirming who will be there so that we don't become a quorum.
I'll be there.
Okay, so we have-
I have it on my calendar to attend, but if others want to attend, I'm-
Okay, so Councilwoman Child, whose assignment it is to be assigned to that, and then anyone else planning to attend? No, it's-
The 8th, February 8th.
The 8th, mm-hmm. Okay, Councilwoman Price Hewish is also available, so are either of you willing to not attend so that we don't have a quorum?
Mayor, I'm willing to not attend.
Okay, excellent, thanks for stepping up. Richard Gibbs, where he can, thank you.
I'm willing to not attend.
Okay, okay.
But happy to do so.
Was this a case of like, 1, 2, 3, not it?
Yeah, you could, you could rock, paper, scissors, whatever.
Or give Kate a Saturday off.
Look, actually, I'm really, I'm taking that back. I really want to attend.
Okay, okay.
I was just trying, trying to be deferential.
Yes, she was trying to be so considerate. So if that's okay, you'll have the morning off, Councilwoman Bradshaw. So I just want to make sure we do not have a quorum in attendance there that morning, so, thanks, everyone.
Mayor, will you just make sure that they understand that? I don't want them, any of the volunteers, to think that we have slighted them by not attending.
Absolutely.
And so I just, if you'll make that really clear, I will now hit delete on my calendar for that Saturday.
I'll make it clear that there's a, that there's a reason why we're not all there in force, so. Okay, thank you, you're there in spirit. Okay, council reports, Councilwoman Child.
I was going to mention that meeting, and that, that would be great. Richard Watson, who's over the concerts in Bountiful City, wanted me to remind everyone that we have a concert and a fundraiser for summer concerts coming up on April 11th. That will be Carpenter's Platinum, 7:00 PM, Viewmont High. And also, in line with that service committee, I'd like to mention that TEDx Bountiful tickets will be going on sale on February 1st, and there are only 100 available, so that will be on our website. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Is it the band Toast that'll be performing that, or is it a different?
No, it's, this is a Carpenter's cover band, not a Bread cover band.
Can't wait. For my council reports, from the Rec District, just wanted to let the community and the rest of the council know that we are working on the vision and mission and goal statement as we try and forecast what the Rec District ought to be and ought to become. As we start to stabilize the budget, we're starting to now think about, you know, what we want to do going forward and what we ought to be. So at some point, we'll be bringing that forward to the community for greater input. From the Bountiful Davis Arts Center, they recently made, they recently had their annual meeting this last week, and, excuse me, also made some changes to their bylaws. Councilwoman Price Hewish will probably appreciate this, because she was most recently the liaison before I was, but they have now made the member of the council that the mayor appoints a voting member of that board, so allows for kind of a little different level of engagement. That liaison still is a one-year term. Mayor's just flagging it for you that you'll have to decide to reappoint me or anyone else to the one-year liaison assignment, but that it now does have a vote, so that we can more fully participate in that organization.
Great, thank you. Okay. Excellent, thank you so much for those reports. Now we will, we are really grateful to Mrs. Colette Rampton, being here tonight to report. She is our Bountiful City Victim Services Advocate, and really glad you're here tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Let me plug in my laptop. Okay, want to make sure I'm not doing it right. Oh, I don't know what it's doing now.
No, no, you're good.
Okay.
While they're getting set up, Colette works with the prosecutor's office, and through a grant, she works, works for Bountiful City and is the contact person for victims. So, so nice that we have someone like you that can help people, give them a little direction of how to navigate the process, and really helpful in our- Thank you, yeah.
There it is.
Thank you. Awesome. Well, thank you for having me again. My name's Colette Rampton, I am the victim advocate of Bountiful City. I am here to present the biannual report that is required per the grant. What are victim services? We are federally funded for the Victims of Crime Act of 1984. I assist victims of crime through the court process. These victims include domestic violence, assault, sexual assault, stalking, harassment, violation of protective orders, things like that. I do notify victims of their rights and that they can be heard at, in court during certain proceedings. I also can help provide victims of crime with resources from the community, and there is also a crime victims application, reparations application that victims can apply for through the Utah Office of Victims of Crime, that also help with financial assistance, mental health, even changing locks on their doors. So it's a very, very helpful service. Last year, from July 1st to December 31st, we had 96 victims of crime, and for those 96 clients of crime, I provided 661 services. Those are broken down into the types of crime, domestic violence, excuse me. We had 47 cases of domestic violence where there were victims. There was one sexual assault case, one child physical abuse case, one victim in a DUI. There were 11 cases of stalking and harassment, there were 10 violation of protective orders, property damage were 19 cases there with victims, and theft we had two. The services that I provide, information and referral, basically information about the criminal justice system, what to expect at each hearing, what each hearing means, and their rights, also that crime victims' reparation application, something that I refer them to. Emotional support, safety planning, sometimes I assist victims with safety planning as, as far as, you know, if they want to leave the home that they're in, or what they can do if something happens again. Criminal and civil justice system assistance. I have attended protective order hearings with victims who were in court on Tuesdays for our misdemeanor calendar, and as well as in Farmington for civil protective orders. And victim impact statement. Victim impact statement is, excuse me, a statement that victims can, they can speak in court at sentencing, they can address the judge and let the judge know their experience and how they feel about sentencing. Accompany victims to prosecution and police interviews, the victims often can come in the office and speak with the prosecutor, as well as I've had officers come in and they have a victim and they assist the victim in filing, helping them file a police report. Sometimes there are restitution in cases that maybe there was damage done, or something to that effect, then they are, they can qualify for restitution, and then always notifying them of each new court date and what's going on next in their, in the criminal justice process. I did assist victims of crime with 32 pre-trial protective orders. These protective orders are in effect through the adjudication process, 13 sentencing protective orders. These protective orders happen when there is a conviction and they are sentenced, and so these protective orders help these victims stay safe, and this protective order is good indefinitely. I assisted a victim with one civil stalking injunction, and that was through the county, and then two civil protective orders. There are a couple of certifications that I received during these last six months. The first one is Vine, it's the victim information and notification every day, and it's a really great, it's a victim notification network. It notifies victims of crime when the offender has, is released from jail, and they can receive a text or a phone call, email, and so it helps these victims know, you know, when that offender is released, let them be aware of that. Also, the Safe at Home, that is for survivors of crime. It establishes an alternate or substitute address that local and state agencies are legally required to accept as their true address. It can help, they can use this for their driver's license, election ballots by mail, court and police records, school enrollment and record transfers, excuse me, state benefits and services, and any legal services of process. This gives the victim an alternate address to be used, so their home address, their physical address, can stay safe and private. And that's it for my presentation. Did you have any questions?
Well, my goodness, it's a lot of people that you help, and I know that your heart is in it, we're so grateful that you're here. Anything, any questions from the council?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm always amazed by this report, the great work that's done in helping people in such difficult circumstances, and I'm curious if you know, or perhaps our city attorney knows, as this is, it sounds like a federal grant, if it would be impacted by any of the freezes at the federal level that were announced earlier today?
I haven't heard anything. I am in the process of applying for, renewing for two years. That is due March 31st, and so going through that process, they haven't said anything otherwise, so I'm continuing with that.
Okay, well, I very much hope that it is not subject to the federal freeze, and if it is, I'd love to propose that we engage our members of Congress to let them know that our community finds tremendous value in this program, and to urge the President to unfreeze this section. I'm not going to pretend to understand all the federal grants that are out there, but this one sure seems to do good works in our community.
Absolutely, much needed, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, if you may.
I just want to say thank you. This is tremendous work. I'm sure it's taxing emotionally, but what a lift and a gift you give to people. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question? I also want to say thank you. I've worked in the protective order context, representing clients many, many times, and it's really important and valuable work, so thank you. Helping especially victims be aware of filing in court and hearing requirements is, it's such a, you know, opaque system for so many people, so this is valuable. I'm just wondering, with so many of our victims of crime- I'm just wondering, with so many of our victims of crime here in Bountiful being victims of domestic abuse, I'm wondering if you have any information about how often the lethality assessment protocol is being utilized and if that, the trends on the laps are going up? Or, I don't know if Chief hasn't, maybe you have that information, but I'm curious about that in connection with your work.
The laps are, they are done every time. They go out on a call, there's a domestic violence call. So, our officers are so good at that. They always complete that assessment and then that assessment is then put in the police report. So, no, that is being done every time so we can see at what level the threat is to that victim.
So, are those being done even when there's not, maybe there's not enough information or cause to make an arrest or do something on, at that point? There's still, the lethality assessment protocol is still taking place every time?
It is.
Yes.
It is.
It meets our qualifications.
Mm-hmm.
Intimate partner, murder, domestic violence.
Yeah.
Whether we make an arrest or not.
That's great. I also just had another really quick question. I'm wondering, in Bountiful, are our numbers trending as far as protective orders and DB incidents? Are they trending up? Are they trending down? Do we have any data on this?
The last six months, there has been an upward trend slightly. It's, I have done more protective orders the last six months than I did the previous six months. I can, I can give you an exact percentage on that. I don't have it with me right now, but it has, there has been a slight upward trend in that compared to last time. So, nothing is that significant.
I'm wondering if you, what your thoughts are. I'm sure there are many people in our city who are not aware of this resource, who are not aware that, that they could be utilizing your services and being connected to really valuable life-saving or restitutional services and resources. So, I'm wondering, do you feel like there could be a public outreach, more public outreach to let people know that this is a service? Or do you feel like there's, people are getting connected when they need?
I know that when our officers are on a call, they do let that victim know of the services that Bountiful City offers. There is a pamphlet that they give to them on scene. I have also reached out to, like, Bountiful Food Pantry, given them my cards, let them know, you know, what I do. And so, they have, they have that information. I think there, there, there can always be more work done to get that out there. And I'm open and willing to do anything necessary to assist in that process.
Do you, are you working in conjunction with Safe Harbor? Or, what is our interface there with Safe Harbor?
I do reach out to Safe Harbor. I, our officers have been really good about letting them know that, excuse me, I can also assist them with protective orders. And honestly, I feel like because, you know, Bountiful City residents, I can actually, I have more time to give to them. Safe, or Safe Harbor is very busy and they have some amazing services and counseling and, and that for victims. But I have reached out to them. We've, you know, there's been a few cases where we've collaborated, but I can provide the services that Safe Harbor. We don't have a shelter, obviously, but I can refer them to the resources. Safe Harbor is a wonderful resource for the shelter, for victims of crime and that. So, they're, they're a wonderful resource too. It is just getting the word out that, you know, we have these services that I can help to assist these victims of crime as well.
Thank you. That's excellent. Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now will consider recommendations from the Traffic Safety Committee and we'll turn the time over to our city engineer, Lloyd Cheney.
Thanks, Mayor. We'll keep our fingers crossed and see if my computer will cooperate with the display. See if Miranda can work her magic.
If anyone can. If...
We're getting close.
So, it's my understanding that we have three different recommendations tonight.
Yeah, so your, your staff report is a very condensed summary of two meetings that in total probably encompassed about five hours. So, please, please under, did I get it? All right, here we go. All right.
Beautiful.
It's always better to be lucky than good. So, of the items that we talked about, three of those have generated a recommendation that need to come to the council for some type of action, whether that's approval or remanding back to the committee for reconsideration or whatever. But I'd also like to note that tonight you have all the voting members of the Traffic Safety Committee here. So, if you have any questions, I think that we'd all be willing to share about that process. But tonight, I'd like to start first with the Bountiful Elementary item. So, the parents of Bountiful Elementary, as you, as you know, have reached out. They were concerned about the status of a crossing guard here on 50 West at 1600 South and the ability of children to cross 50 West safely. Traditionally, there has been a time when there was a volunteer group who acted as, acted as the crossing guard. And that disbanded for a period of time. In the, in the time of the committee meeting, it, it did kind of ramp back up, which we're grateful for. So, there was a lot of discussion between the committee and the school. We're happy to have the principal attend and participate in, in our discussions. And, and we talked a lot about the need for a routing plan, which is, is required for every school. So, out of the discussion came a commitment by the city to work with the school district to develop those plans and implement those. Another good outcome from our discussion was the re-establishment of the kitty walk. Now, it's a little hard to see in the photo, but if you peek in between the tennis courts, you can kind of see a very faint deer trail right through here. It's not really a deer trail. It's a, it's a kitty trail. There it is, right there. So, that's, that's the original location of the, of the gap in the fence where the kids would go from the elementary school over here to the parking lot and, and catch a ride. Well, that was, that's been closed in the course of construction. And over the holidays, we requested that the school district reopen that to help alleviate some of the congestion around the school. And so, that has been re-established right over here in this area. Representatives of the district have indicated there is a possibility that they, that may need to be closed based on some, some legislation. So, we're, we're a little nervous about that. We, we hope that that's not the case because it certainly is a benefit to the students. But it has provided a relief to many students being able to go over and utilize the parking lot at the park to catch a ride home. So, if we wanted to summarize up where, where the committee ended up with this discussion, it was, it was recommended by the committee that the council approve a temporary crossing guard through the end of the school year with the expectation that the school would submit an updated plan for the new circulatory pattern with the new elementary that we could evaluate the need that they're going to have with the new school and be able to fund the crossing guard needs appropriately.
Is there, there's already three crossing guards at this school? Is that right?
There's a crossing guard here at the roundabout that covers these two legs of the roundabout. There's one at 1500 South and 50 West that covers these two legs of the intersection. And then there is also a crossing guard here on 1800 South at 50 West.
So, this fourth one would be considered a temporary because things are evolving with the construction and the routes?
That's correct.
And do you know, is there still some parent volunteers that are working as crossing guards?
I believe that there are. The city has provided a paddle stop sign and some vests that are kept at the school for volunteers to, to use. We haven't necessarily been deeply involved in scheduling that or knowing quite what the response is. That's been a volunteer effort. And the school hasn't really taken a role in that, other than to have a place to keep those pieces of equipment.
If I could jump in, is that okay?
Sure.
The principal, I believe it was, reported back that they were having a difficult time getting enough volunteers to staff it fully. So...
The parents were utilizing a Google Doc through a closed Facebook group. So, I think the ability for either the city or the school to know exactly who was signing up, seemed they had some, but not all shifts covered.
So, the recommendation is to have a temporary crossing guard?
Through the end of the current school year.
Through the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, I just want to kind of echo what Lloyd is saying. These were really highly discussed, this was highly discussed. There were a lot of really engaged people there who, including the Traffic Safety Committee, who were just all working to find a solution. One thing that I just want to reemphasize that came out at the end of the second meeting is Principal Pickett and her vice principal were both in attendance and had mentioned the Bountiful Cluster and which principals from all of the feeder schools that go to Bountiful High attend these monthly cluster meetings. And they talk about all kinds of things, all kinds of issues, but including traffic safety. And, and I, that was a really great invitation, I thought, from the principal for the city to kind of figure out a way to be engaged and involved in the Bountiful Cluster meetings going forward. Maybe not all of them, but maybe annually or biannually, or a couple of times a year to look at, to make sure we're on the same page and consider how all of these issues regarding access and safe routes are interfacing with our city. And so, I felt like that was really encouraging and something that everyone on the committee seemed like they were supportive of, of getting involved at that level with the cluster.
I would just make one comment to that. Later this week, I'm going to go to a, to a conference of all the city engineers in the state. And I intend to talk to many of my colleagues, both here in Davis County and those in surrounding parts, to understand what they do with their school districts. I think that'll be very insightful.
That's great. What would you prefer, Lloyd? Do you think that we make three different motions here or with this discussion or?
I think you could handle it either way. If you wanted to make individual motions, I think that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions on this, council?
I just want to flag a few things that we ought to be aware of for the future and perhaps engage our legislators with that have come up because of the discussions we had about the crossing guard here. One, the, the legislation that is in place and that will be tweaked this year about the hardening of campuses, school campuses because of active shooter situations, which is certainly something we, you know, want to take seriously. But we have a number of schools, this is one, Tolman Elementary, Bountiful Junior High would be another, where they abut city parks. Our city parking lots, our city parks have long been neighborhood cut-throughs and, and access points. And I spoke with a legislator who's running that legislation to say, what do we do about the everyday safety versus, you know, the hopefully never instance of an active shooter? And how can we accommodate this because of the interface between neighborhoods and city versus, versus school? So, I've asked him to think about that. I don't know that I have any great solutions, but would put that on our radar. The second is, as we looked as a committee at the new traffic plans for when the new elementary school is complete, and the, and the school district and the school will need to submit us a new traffic safety plan for that. I'm not convinced that they still won't have very similar traffic problems based on the design they've done. And I think it's a real missed opportunity between the school district and the city that they didn't talk to us much earlier in their design of, and layout of this construction to seek a better flow for the pickup and drop-off times. It's too late now for how they've designed this to, to change it. And so, you know, this new elementary school will stand for 50 to 60 years. And so, we'll have probably a similar problem for the next 50 to 60 years. And because of the way schools are designated, they don't have to interact. They're, they're a land-use island, you know, their own kind of sovereign entity inside our city. And I'm not saying that we want to dictate the placements of bathrooms and locker rooms and classrooms, but it's just a real missed opportunity to not think about again this traffic flow and this interaction. And perhaps future legislation could tweak that. And then third would be, you know, we, we found through this process that the plans that are required to be submitted to the city haven't been submitted to the city and haven't been for all of the schools in the city. And granted, most of them are never changing because schools usually stand for 50 or more years before they're remodeled and tweaked and changed. But it sure is a shame that when we had a, a construction opportunity, that, that requirement encode. So, there are three areas where I think we could engage with our Bountiful delegation and the legislature at a later date beyond this issue to, to use this as an example of how this could be better so that we make sure that this interaction between our neighborhoods and the safety of our residents going back and forth and the, you know, the professionals that are doing the design have better opportunities to engage and communicate. Because I, I think we will solve this one for a short time, but it's a shame that we weren't designing a plan that would have created a really smooth pickup and drop-off opportunity for future Bountiful Elementary students.
I have a question on, to follow up on that is, we had, I don't know, obviously, getting in with our legislator now takes some time, but Bountiful High has started construction. They lost 70 or 80 parking stalls just this last week. And so, that's going to push a lot more cars from high school students into the neighborhoods. So, again, it'd be nice to be a part of some of these conversations so we know their plans because that does have a significant impact on our community.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a great point. Thank you.
I could just comment on that. We had the same level of involvement for that. I got an email from the consulting engineer asking about some utility questions. And basically, an email from the consulting engineer asking about some utility questions, basically with a statement that we're ready to go out to bid and we want to know when your contractor can be here to do the work. Kind of like, oh, by the way.
Thank you. That's a really, those are good points. Thank you. So council, do you want to take this one by one or do you want to move to the next item?
Yeah, let's do it all together at the end.
Okay. All right. So the next, the next?
The next item is a request for stop signs. And let's get up here to the Bountiful High area. Now, I'll have to admit, in the times that I've spent thinking about this particular request, it took me back to my days in high school when me and my friends would have taken a road like this and we'd have been more concerned about getting to the right spot on a cassette tape and listening to Eddie Van Halen play Jump than anything else. So knowing that the residents of 750 East have the unique opportunity to live on a street that has connectivity between Mill Street and 5th South, traffic could be a concern. In response to the request by the residents up there, the engineering department did a more extensive amount of traffic study than we usually do, just to verify what was really going on. This is really a low-volume street. And by low volume, I mean less than 400 cars a day. So in comparison to what you have out on Orchard Drive, which is just a short distance away, but is more along the lines of 13,000 to 15,000 cars a day, this is, this really is a low-volume street. But once in a while, there probably is a teenager who's late to class or needs to go home and get his homework, or who knows, is traveling fairly quickly. After discussing the requirements to put in a stop sign, which the MUTCD, our favorite manual for the Uniform Traffic Control Devices, lays out some parameters for when a stop sign or a yield sign is appropriate. And it advises us that the best place to put a stop sign or a yield sign would not be on a major, on the major street of an intersection, but rather on the minor street to promote the efficiency of the street network. So a residence request to put a stop sign here on the southeast corner and an opposite one on the northwest corner would really not be the recommendation of the traffic engineering community, but rather the more appropriate place for those signs, if they were justified, would be on the northeast corner and the southwest corner to limit the minor street traffic. So we had quite a bit of discussion about that. I think in an effort to have the residents feel like they had been heard and that the city, you know, is responsive to their concerns, a motion was made to install some speed limit signs. Most of the residential streets in town do not have a speed limit sign. We've lived with the philosophy that the state law dictates that if you're on a street that doesn't have a speed limit sign, the default speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Now, there are neighborhoods where we do have a few speed limit signs. And we always remind people that signs are of limited value. Probably the highest value is that they make the people who request the signs feel good that they got signs. But in the long term, people really, the data points out that they ignore signs. They're affected for a very short period of time. And then people return to their habits or what they perceive as what is safe to do on this street. How safe is it to drive 40 miles an hour? Do I feel like there's a lot of conflicts? Are there things that I need to anticipate? They really have a limited value. So I want to say that right up front. I don't want to give you the impression that I am against speed limit signs. I think they certainly have their place. The committee's recommendation is that the council authorize speed limit signs in two locations on the street. And I would advise that the best locations be very close to Mill Street here on the property line here on the east side of the road for northbound traffic. And for southbound traffic off 5th South, really the best place to put a speed limit sign would be right here on the property line between the second and third properties as you're southbound from 5th South. There's good visibility. You're not too far from making the turn. You haven't quite hit warp speed yet. And so you should be able to see the sign and be reminded that you need to keep it under control. Are there any questions about that item? Okay. We'll move to our next request. And actually, of all the requests that we had to consider, I think this has been the funnest one because it actually came from a gentleman who, I don't believe he's a resident of Bountiful, but I think it's awesome that he volunteers his time at the food pantry. But in order to get to the food pantry, he has to take public transit. And the bus stop for southbound traffic is not, or yeah, for southbound, on the southbound route, doesn't stop at a really good place that allows him to go right to the Bountiful Food Pantry. It stops up here close to the intersection, just on the south side of the intersection here at 200 North. And so he has to backtrack back up to 250 North, take the marked school crossing, come to the east side of the road, and then back down to 150 North to get to the food pantry. For northbound traffic or bus traffic, the stop is right here. So it's really convenient. That's a good thing. And so his request was to put in a pedestrian crosswalk at 150 North. As I reviewed that, I felt like it might be a better idea to move that crossing location down here to 100 North. There's a great visibility here. Back at 150 North, there is a driveway. You can see the cars in the driveway right here. So on the north side of the intersection, probably wouldn't be a really good spot. The south side would be a little better, but there is a little bit of vegetation that would maybe hinder some visibility. And I thought that down here by, moving it by 100 North would be a lot better. It's a lot more open. There's an existing street light, which would be really good for visibility for both pedestrians and motorists. And so the Traffic Safety Committee's recommendation is to install a pedestrian crosswalk on the north side of 100 North.
Where's the bus stop again?
The northbound bus stop is right here.
Yeah, the southbound one.
Southbound.
The gentleman was taking.
Is right here. South side of the intersection at 200 North.
Any other questions on that item? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve each of the recommendations from the Traffic Safety Committee for crossing guard at 50 West and 1600 South, for speed limit signs on 750 East, and for a crosswalk to be located at 100 North and 400 East.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to those who sat in on the Traffic Safety Committee and did the work to help with that, those discussions.
I did have one question. Does not change my response.
Sure. Yeah.
Timing for the crossing guard and that one in particular.
Good question.
Chief, do you want to come up to the microphone really fast? The crossing guards are hired and managed by the police department. And so chief probably have the best answer on our ability to find someone.
It is always hard to find somebody in anticipation and believing what the vote was going to be tonight. I've already asked our crossing guard supervisor to start looking for that position and speaking with him. In the last couple of days, he believes that he has found someone. So we should be able to start pretty much right away as soon as we can get him hired and onboarded and that sort of stuff.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Now we'll turn the time over to Mr. Allen Johnson for our next two items to consider approval of the purchase of a Virginia Transformer as our first item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here tonight and appreciate the opportunity to be here. I will say, as Council Price-Hewish talked, we did have power commission this morning, and both of these were discussed. And it does come with favorable recommendations on both of these, only to get to the point. But the first one we have is, again, we've been bringing different materials. And this is for the rebuilding of the Northwest substation. Again, some other pieces and parts that we need for. And the first item is for a capacitor bank. And I got asked this morning what a capacitor bank was. And we had one of our power commissioners who wants to put up the flux capacitor like we do on Back to the Future. So that might be the best explanation for it, but that's not really what it's for. But again, a capacitor is a storage device used on AC power. And the more I talk, the worse it's going to get. But it basically aligns true power and apparent power and brings it back in. So we have the supplies bars. I mean, and I realize I'm not helping much, but that was sort of the explanation I had to give this morning. But it corrects our power factor. It's, we have a requirement for our high voltage 138 substation that our whole system stays within an average of 90% power factor or 95% over peak. And what this device does is offset motors that we use for air conditioners or motors and heaters. And this is timed where it turns on and off. And it basically corrects that and brings our, they call it power factor back online. I realize that doesn't help much, but that's what this unit is really for. We did go out to bid and we did receive three bids. The one bid, like I say, on the point, had a note that we did receive it via email, but it did not meet the specifications, the BIL level or the basic impulse level, which is basically what allows the fault duty in the substation wasn't high enough. So we wasn't able to go with that one. So it'd be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we take the low bid for the Controlix Corporation from Virginia Transformer for $103,272. And again, this is identified in our capital account for that Northwest substation.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the capacitor bank for the Northwest substation from Controlix Corporation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. And our next item?
Okay. The next one we have is we currently have a contract with Diamond Trees Experts for two crews that work in their city. And they work year-round trimming trees. So we have these two contract crews and we have our own in-house crew. So we basically have three crews that are trimming trees all year long. The contract crew is, well, they go out and work in different areas. We give them a map and they work down through the area and clear. Our crews do that, but they also chase snows, help with Christmas lights, other types of things that get pulled off. But this crew basically just stays trimming all the time. And we've had a contract with them for a number of years, but it's expiring in June of this year. So we've contacted them and the contract, it allows for 12-month increments or multiple 12-month increments. And we have visited with them and worked it out and where they have agreed to extend their contract for three years with 3% this nearest year, another 3% the following year, and 2% the year after that. The rates on that is what you've got posted in there, which is hourly wage for a crew. And it's a three-man crew, which includes their truck and saws and safety gear and everything that they need to do that job. So it becomes a value to the city. One of the things that we talked about this morning is by trimming trees has lowered our tree-related outage immensely to where every storm that comes through or the wind blows, we're not out working all the time. So it's been a really benefit to the reliability and the keeping the power on for the citizens. Again, we've identified this in our upcoming budget as we work our back through it. So again, it'd be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation. And I say, we'll say this contract has been, our attorney has looked at it and he's approved the contract portion of it.
That's great. Thank you. For the kids in the room, tonight you are hearing our Power Department Director, Allen Johnson. He's in charge of the power for Bountiful City. And he's saying we need to trim the trees. And we trim the trees so that their branches don't go and keep the power from operating. We have all the power lines, right? And when the trees get caught up in those power lines, then sometimes we have power outages. So he's talking about trimming the trees so that we can keep our power flowing to your house. So thanks for that, Allen. Any questions or comments from the council? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with Diamond Tree.
Second. Seconded by Councilwoman Price-Hewish. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks so much, Allen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And now for our last item, we will turn the time over to our city attorney, Brad Jopson.
Good evening, council. I'm here today asking the council to change our personal policy manual, specifically the appearance section. Speaking of tattoos, or as Eddie Van Halen would call them, poetry in ink. We've had this policy for a long time and we're looking at basically updating it to comply with societal norms. As you guys see people walking around, old, gone are the days of the athletes look like Pete Samper, seniors look like Gary Morris, and we're of much different, much different look than we did back when the manual was created. We believe that allowing tattoos in a very restricted manner on the arms, on the arms and for employees who can wear them on the legs, we'll be able to fit those norms as well as be more competitive in a recruitment and retention role. Are there any questions from the council?
When does this take effect?
What time is it?
Okay. So after we, if we approve of this, it will be in effect?
It will be in effect.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions from the council?
Just one. Counselor, do you have any tattoos?
I do not.
Okay.
I was chosen to present this because I was head of the committee. This was, I would like to take credit, but this really was all the department heads together saying, what are the problems? How can we, how can we solve them? And this was one of the solutions we came up with, with retention as well as recruitment.
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion that we adopt the amendments to the personnel manual as our counselor has explained to us.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Price-Hewish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And now, is there a?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.
Nay.